Accountability. As I shared at the November Board meeting, goal setting can be a big part of developing a culture of accountability. To that end, both the Board and the Superintendent develop goals for the year and beyond. The Superintendent goals are aligned closely with the district's strategic plan, and his goals trickle down directly to the administrative team. A common error that organizations make as it relates to goal setting is spending lots of energy developing the goals but then never revisiting them. The revisiting part is critical. The goals remind us what we should be focused on and let us know if we're actually doing what we said we would. Doing this review informally on a daily or weekly basis is a great reminder of our priorities, and doing it formally at least once a quarter also infuses discipline into the process. Today, I'd like to revisit the Board goals and provide a quick update on each item. First, our Board defined three core values that we attempt to utilize in our decision-making. Student-centric governance, constantly asking the question, "Is what we're doing best for students?" Vision-centric leadership, always looking for ways to accelerate our path towards achieving the stated vision. And fiscal responsibility, are we being good stewards of the taxpayers' money? I think this Board has done an excellent job representing these values, and I can think of many recent examples where these values have been evident. One great example is the construction projects under discussion at DPM. All three core values were evident in those discussions, particularly last month, with Board members directly asking, "How do these projects affect students? Are these projects aligned with the stated vision? And is this the best use of our money? What other opportunities do we forego in order to do these projects?" So I'm very pleased that our Board is taking these values to heart, and we'll continue to do our best in keeping them at the forefront when making our decisions. Next, we defined four Board goals. I'll give a brief update on progress against each one. First goal was to increase engagement between the community and the school district. The Board and admin team is actively developing a series of activities to increase engagement. This includes a monthly email sent to parents and community members recapping highlights of the Board meetings. In an effort to make Board meetings more accessible, we're taking our Board meetings to the neighborhood schools, with the March meeting being held at DPM and the April meeting being held at Everett. We will visit Sheridan and Cherokee next year. We're also discussing a few different topics where we're actually engaging the community, creating a dialogue, and obtaining a good view of the community's perspectives. And we'll have more information on that in the near future. The second goal is to undertake more active role in legislative advocacy and awareness. Over the past six months, the Board has held a number of committee meetings and workshops on this topic. We have a working draft of our Board's legislative priorities, and from that, we'll be developing more concrete plans for where we want to focus and what next steps we might want to take. Thanks go to Kent, Suzanne, and Beth for taking leadership roles on this goal. The third Board goal is to improve the processes for administrative compensation and superintendent performance evaluation. Much work has been accomplished on both of these fronts. The compensation committee has met a number of times, and they've developed both the process and a timeline for how administrator's salary increases are handled, with the biggest change being starting the process much earlier. We've also created an ad hoc committee to refine and refresh the process we use to perform our annual review of the Superintendent. Both of these new processes will be utilized in the next few months, and further refinements may be made as we put them into practice. Thanks go to Tom and Rob for their leadership on the admin comp process, and thanks to Beth, Rob, and Suzanne for their work on the evaluation process. The fourth Board goal is to begin development of Board operating procedures. This is the one goal that we've done the least work as a group yet, but that was partially by design, as our new Board members are now much more fully up the learning curve, which will be very beneficial as we begin work on this goal. In April, we'll be scheduling a Board workshop to formally begin this process. Thanks to Jeff, who has agreed to lead our Board through this process, and who has already begun work gathering best practices and examples from other districts, so we won't need to reinvent the wheel. One last comment regarding our progress against these goals. As I looked at this, I found it really fantastic that every Board member is taking a leadership role in at least one of these goals. This work is in addition to all the regular Board work that we do, participating on various committees, acting as liaisons to other Boards, and responding to the regular day-to-day issues that arrives. I'm extremely pleased at the level of engagement that each and every Board member has, and I'm grateful for the work that each of you do for our school district, our community, and ultimately, our students. That concludes the President's report. We now move to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. Lake Forest will hold, the administrative team will hold a series of K-4 curriculum conversations, and parents are invited to a panel discussion with district leaders on current curriculum initiatives and school improvement efforts. The topics will include, but won't be limited to, English Language Arts, math, and inquiry learning. In addition, we'll discuss ways in which parents can support their children's success. The panelists will include the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Rogers, Assistant Superior for Curriculum, Ms. Mills, Director of Teaching and Learning, the Principals, Administrators, and Teachers. Cherokee will be the first on March 8th, from 11:30 to 12:30. Everett, later, earlier that same day, will be Everett, March 8th at 7:45 to 8:45. Sheridan will be on March 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then we'll hold one for all parents here at the Administrative Center on March 14th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Further item of interest, we have completed our CSCI survey. It closed last Friday. We had very strong participation from our students and staff. The results are now being processed, and within a couple of weeks, we should have some information about how we did on that one. So this is something we'll be submitting to all staff annually and all students annually. Parents will do every other year. And that's because it is hard to get parents to participate in those things on an annual basis, and we hope that by doing it every other year, we'll have better success having a high rate of participation. This past Saturday, I want to pass on some accolades here to Amy Lamberty and also to Ms. Zapki, who is with us tonight, for the SIT Conference, which is Students Involved with Technology. We had about 500 students that were all over Deer Path West this past Saturday. It's something that is held throughout the state. It is sponsored by State Farm Insurance, I believe, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six locations across the entire state of Illinois. And this started with a "what if" from Ms. Lamberty. I met her in the parking lot outside the building here, and she said, "You know, we do, there are these conferences, and they're really cool, and we go to them in other places, and I wonder if we could ever do this here." And that turned in from a germ of an idea into a full-blown event for what wound up being a lot of our kids. So I wanted to read you some of the things that our students did. There are too many students involved for me to present all of the names, but I'll give you some of the topics. So this is students learning from other students. So there's a presentation that they give, and kids sign up, or they go, they move around the building, and they hit the ones that they want to hit. It's very, very high energy. So all about high-tech toys from the past and the present. And that was when I spoke to the dad that was in working with the kids, and he said it really, really had gone well. And our own, Mr. Borkowski, was one of the people that was presenter and had to attend to other important family matters that day. Battery technology with Tesla, a bunch of our kids presented on that. Another was crazy coding, codable. Another, mastering Instagram. So you can see, there's a number of different things that kids did. Minecraft circuitry, one of our third graders presented on that. And the technology of tornadoes. And finally, I think that's it. So a number of our students participated. You could walk around the building, a lot of parents were there, kids from a whole bunch of different schools all around the region. A lot of energy. And the best part is, this was year one of this. We had an army of parent and community volunteers in there as well, helping point kids in whatever direction. The nice thing is, is we get to do it again next year. So it's, you know, the first one is always the toughest one. So without any question, I think we'll have more students participating next year after you get a taste of it, and you build from there. So Ms. Zapki, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. It was a great day. You spent, I think, all day there. Anything to add?
We've already talked with the people that put this together at I H U, and have said that we would like to increase our numbers. We capped it at 500. I think we can support a whole lot more, so we're really looking forward to involving more of our students and students around the area.
This was students, elementary, lower elementary, right on up through high school. So one of the students I know was a former DPM student, he's now a sophomore at the high school.
Can I just say, it was my understanding, too, that it sold out, right? People were turned away, yeah.
Thank you. Other questions, comments for the Superintendent? Seeing none, we move on to public participation. The Board of Education welcomes public participation at all of our meetings. If a member of the public would like to address the Board, they should come to the microphone, state their name and address before addressing the Board. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes to speak. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, we move on to reports and discussions, the first being English Language Arts update.
So this looks a little bit different than what was in your packet, just, because I'd rather talk from slides than lots and lots of words. So what you see here for the English Language Arts Adoption Update is really the milestone slide, just as a reminder that these are very, everything that we're doing is aligned to our milestones. This, specifically this evening, will talk to the instruction milestone as well as talent. Instruction, obviously, in providing students with highly differentiated instruction based on needs, passions, interests, as well as our talent being supported with job-embedded professional development, timely, meaningful, in order to best support our staff and then our students. So workshop encompasses many, many things, and for us, it was a K-8 writing implementation this year. And we have been very successful in using that implementation to its fullest for our teachers. They have embraced it, they are very involved in professional development in an ongoing fashion throughout the course of the year, they had preparation for it as well, and they really report, in any opportunity that you get to talk to them, huge growth for our students. Volume, excitement, a true, true love of writing, and just, you know, groaning when they're asked to put their notebooks away, or when the time is up, or if they miss it for a day because something else comes up. So that's really, really exciting. I included in here, because I think it tells the best picture, is to see students in action. They're not super clear, but I thought it was still powerful to see students involved in mini lessons, teachers giving that direct instruction, explicit instruction to students, as well as having that large amount of time in a workshop in order to practice their writing on a daily basis. And that can be using technology, using paper, using revision strips in lots of different ways. And then a huge part of it is the sharing and the celebration piece. And parents have been invited in, public presentations have occurred, they range in all different ways, which has been wonderful to see. And this is the part that the students get so excited about. They are the authors and the presenters. And then also, a parent, a couple parent demonstration lessons in order for that community outreach to be going on. This, a couple Board members might be in that picture somewhere. So this was just yesterday, but one of our teachers has taken it on to do a couple demo lessons for teachers to, for parents to come in and live a workshop. And that's really what it is, is what is a day in a life of our students with workshop? So that has been very well-received. So in addition to all of the work that we've been doing on writing, I also felt it was important to update you on the preparation that we're doing for the 2016-17 reading workshop implementation. Both were adopted at the same time, supported for that rollout. So we have started providing teachers with materials, we have started the preparation for thinking about ordering materials, which, as I said in the Board report, looks different than it does in a traditional textbook adoption, but requires a great deal of classroom libraries and books to be in the hands of our students. Additionally, we have started different professional development opportunities for teachers, book studies during CII, during department time, as well as our big, exciting preparation is hoping to bring a homegrown summer reading institute here with Teachers College, staff developers, here in Lake Forest, so that as many teachers as possible can have that experience of what we have asked to send teachers to in New York as well. We'll still do some of that for writing, but hoping to provide a real four-day deep experience for our teachers. And that has been tentatively set with dates from Teachers College, and I already have probably 50 teachers who have expressed interest in coming and spending four of their days in July doing this preparation. Lastly, is the addition of Little Bit of Talent, a new position for supporting our teachers, a literacy teaching and learning facilitator, who will really be my, you know, my right hand in order to be able to add support for teachers. Co-planning, co-teaching, collaborating, helping to solidify our curriculum, and really helping to be on the ground, supporting our teachers and coaching, because we know that that, going back to that milestone, that job-embedded, timely, professional development is absolutely essential as we continue on this journey. So this just resonated with me. It's a place to think, dream, make, and do, and I feel that our workshops in our classrooms are really providing that space for our students, which clearly aligns with our vision. That's it.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any comments or questions?
I just wanted to share that I've actually spoken with multiple parents who attended the parent workshops and were extremely pleased. People went out of their way to call me and say that they were extremely pleased and excited about the program and what they had experienced in the workshop, so, well done.
We're hoping to expand that also. We have a teacher on the 5-6 side who has said she would be willing to do that for parents as well, meeting with her on Friday to talk about it, and so hopefully, that will, that will grow.
I was going to actually encourage you to do just that, because I think Jeff and I both had a chance to be there and experience it, and until you've really gone through it, I mean, having sat through all of the education committee meetings and hearing about it is one thing, but to actually do it hands-on yourself, you really get a different flavor for it. And I think if more parents had a chance to kind of be in the classroom and experience it and know what their child is experiencing, it would really be beneficial. So I'm so glad to hear you're expanding it.
I want to pass on, I've had one parent in particular contact me, a very discriminating customer, and say that the workshop on the 7-8 side of the building was probably the very best thing that this parent had ever experienced in terms of a teaching, a parental teaching experience that she'd had in any school. And so, I really appreciate the work that you're doing, because I know that you're working behind the scenes to organize these things and inspire. It is really Herculean undertaking to have a math rollout that has gone as well as it has, and this year, the writing rollout. So Mr. Rogers and Suzanne really appreciate the huge amount of work. The writing is something that, you think of the challenge to have every single teacher that teaches writing across the entire district implement a completely new approach in the span of one year. So we went quite literally from zero to 100 on this over the course of the summer. And I know how hard that is, and we're not done yet. So it's the deep implementation of that, and it's also the reading that follows that on the heels, so that, too, is another Herculean undertaking. So in advance, thank you, and really well done. Teachers, every teacher that, done around, to run around to all of the different buildings, every single teacher says, "Really hard, really a lot of work, and really remarkable what production the kids have." So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Rob, you want to ask Sue to comment? Okay. Then we move on to short-term construction plan.
I would like to know it's...
Yeah? Is, who's giving the short-term construction plan update?
I'll make another comment on the previous report. Because I had one, but I wasn't going to make it. So as far as the student celebrations go, I wanted to share one other, a couple other experiences that I had with regard to that since this writing program was implemented. I've been at a Sheridan Sharing Assembly where students were sharing their work, and they shared, "This was my first go, and then this was what I decided to do to make it better." And they were very articulate and detailed and specific about what moves they made as an author to improve their piece of writing. And then they read their next one and their next one after that, and it was pretty amazing to hear them talk about these, making these writing decisions. And then I went to an event held by the 7th grade, where every 7th grader published a piece of writing, and any 7th grader who wanted was given an audience to share it with. And some were selected to share it with their peers on a much larger scale in the auditorium, and it was a phenomenal event. And solely focused on writing as the performance, which you rarely get to see.
Thank you. Ellen, you're up, sir. Short-term construction.
I'm going to update you a little bit on some of the plans that we're talking about for this coming summer regarding facility improvements. The first one that we're going to be addressing is the flooring on the DPM East Side campus. With the completion of the replacement of that flooring, we will have replaced and abated all of the asbestos tile in the district. This has been a four-year project, a major undertaking, because when you think about when we do a building, every piece of furniture has to be relocated, has to be tagged and marked, relocated, and then put back where it originally was. So we started several years ago with DPM West, moved on to Everett Elementary, this past summer, did Sheridan and Cherokee, and then the DPM East Side will be the culmination of that initiative. We also plan this summer to paint all the classrooms and hallways in Cherokee and Sheridan. And as you know, we've issued a contract with a consultant to develop a new design for the Haskins Center. And that presentation will be made to us by March 4th. We anticipate bringing that to you at the March meeting with a recommendation whether to proceed in full, whether to phase it, or whether to shelve it. The major project that we have under consideration for the summer is some extensive renovations to the DPM Office and Satellite Library over on the East Side. So I'm going to try and put up an existing floor plan, and I'm not quite sure how this is going to show. But to try and orient everybody, it doesn't really show it here, but the entrance doors to DPM East would be right about here. And then further over here would be the auditorium. And so as you come in, there's a staircase that goes upstairs to what used to be the Administration Center many years ago. And this is the existing office. Across the hall is the Satellite Library Center. So this is the area that we're looking at reconfiguring. I'm going to ask you to take a mental picture of this, because then I'll put up the conceptual drawing we have and then talk through that. This shows a little bit more of the area, so here's the actual entrance. And in this plan, what happens is we would add a double vestibule. A double vestibule adds security to the building, because what happens, once school starts, is that both sets of doors become locked, people become buzzed in. But if somebody's waiting at the door, you can't let them in by yourself, because there's too much distance between the two doors. We also took that staircase out and then routed the entrance, once school starts, through the main office, so that visitor access has to come through the main office to get in. And you can see then, on the other end of the vestibule, we did the same thing, added a double vestibule, so once school starts, those doors would be locked, people could be buzzed in, but it makes it much harder to enter the building on your own. In the office area, in the first plan I had up, this was a teacher resource area. We took that area and moved it across the hall to here, and then recaptured that space to allow for better flow within the office. The existing offices for the principal and the assistant principal remain. They're slightly larger than what they have now, and the nurse's office is reconfigured with a more handicap-accessible restroom. As we move across the hall, there are two offices here that I believe are located currently on the second floor?
No, they're located just east.
Just east, okay. In this space? Okay. So these two offices are being relocated, they're not new offices, and that makes room for our Life Skills classroom, which consists of a kitchen, a laundry area, a living area, and a classroom area. This is a program that we brought back several years ago from NSSED, and it's really sort of in a makeshift space at the moment, so that's an instructional deficiency that we're trying to address. This conceptual plan also draws in an adult meeting room or a conference room, which is sorely lacking on the East Side of the building. And as we meet with parents and engage with parents, this creates a proper space to do that. Also, the school recently received a grant through the LDA for some physical...
Multi-sensory room.
Multi-sensory equipment, and this conceptual drawing creates a space to house that. So in summary, the conceptual drawing that you're looking at improves the security and visitor management, it provides an improved office configuration, it constructs a Life Skills academic and living area to support students in that program, it constructs a conference room to address the lack of meeting space, it relocates and enlarges the teacher resource room, and creates a space to house the multi-sensory room. This process started about eight or nine months ago with meetings with our architects and talking about needs. the architects to develop construction documents in the amount of $89,000, so that we can then go out and bid the project and get actual construction costs. The architect's estimate for all of these revisions ranges between $1 million and roughly 1.4 million. That's quite a span, but that's because finishes haven't been picked, picked out yet, and that that has a big impact on the cost. So, administratively, we think this is a really smart plan, and we think we're getting a lot of bang for our buck out of this. Whether or not we proceed with it this summer, that would not, you would not be asked to make that decision until the April meeting. And at that time, when we have accurate construction costs, we're a little further along in our staffing plans for next year. We might have some news out of Springfield. We can do a much better job of assessing the financial impact of this on our long-term projections. But whether it's this summer, or next summer, or the year after, we think this is a good plan, and at some point should move forward. So, investing the $89,000 now to develop contract documents is a smart move, because this doesn't have a shelf life. This won't expire, and then we'll have to start over. You'd have the documents in place whether we move forward this summer or at some point in the future. The other reason to move forward this summer is because of replacing all the flooring in the, in the building, we're going to have a lot of disruption going on anyway. And so, if we can concentrate that and do that all in one summer rather than two, operationally we see that as better. May I entertain questions?
Yeah, Alan, when we talked about this last month, you had estimated the cost for the drawings to be closer to $60,000. What's, what's the big bump?
This is why I am a school business manager and not an architect. We're looking at something similar at the high school, and so, I looked at what we were spending on construction drawings there. I looked at this and thought this was a simpler project, because we're taking the Satellite Center, which is roughly a wide-open space, and putting up some walls and bringing in some electricity. But when we got the actual cost from the architect, I called up and I said, "Why, this looks much less complicated than the high school." And he said, "Actually, it's quite the reverse. This is a much more complicated project." Because of the removal of the stairs and because of where some of the mechanical items are and the relocation of things, it's much more involved on their end, and that's why the cost was more. So, when we met, I was using, I had no information. I didn't have an accurate cost from them, so I was trying to relay it to what we're looking at on the high school side of town.
Thanks. And then, also, you mentioned operationally, if we did this at the same time with the floors, it would be operationally easier. But if we did it at the same time as the floors with everything at once, do you think there'd be a material savings in dollars to do it together versus some this year and some another year? Can't you answer that?
Not a whole lot, because they're separate projects. It's going to take a lot more work on the part of construction management and the architect and our staff to stage this. Because when we do the floors and you abate the asbestos, the area becomes encapsulated, so nobody has access to it while the asbestos and the old carpet are being removed. Then, there are air tests that are run. And then, once that demolition is done, then the other crews can go in and do it. But there's not a lot of crossover. It's just that operationally, rather than relocate for two years, it's just relocating for one during the summer.
So, when you say operationally, you just mean clearing everything out of the area to allow for the construction, and then having to put it all back, and then having to clear it all out again if we extend it over the course of multiple years?
Yes.
Alan, you said, "One of the complexities of this plan is the removal of the stairs." Is there a way of looking at the plan without removing the stairs? I mean, in other words, if you look at the north vestibule, there's no flow directly into the office for people coming in through that door. Why does there have to be direct access to the front desk of people coming in through the south door?
This would be the north, north door, do you mean?
Sorry, yes, correct.
Okay. When, the office staff for several years has been asking for changes because of line of sight. And so, when we met with the architects, that was one of the things we talked about. Also, on the existing plan-
I realize that, but you don't get line of sight from the south end. So, I guess my question is, relative to the number of people that come in through each vestibule, if a large part of the cost and the complexity comes from removal of the stairs to allow that flow, and yet, you know, half of the people are coming through the door that doesn't allow line of sight anyway, how important is it to necessarily have line of sight in both? I'm just looking for a way to potentially reduce complexity and cost.
Sure, sure. We could certainly do this project without taking those staircases out, but we would not have the line of sight, and we wouldn't have, once school starts again with these doors locked, access to the building has to flow through the office. It was the plan. And so, we saw a benefit in that, but could we go back and reconfigure it?
I think, I think it would be beneficial to at least allow for that as another possibility in you look at the drawings, just as we put together the costs, to say, "Well, you know, if we decide not to remove the steps, it goes from $1,200,000 to $800,000." Oh, okay, well, that's something we should think about.
What we can do on that, and the right way of doing that is you bid them as alternate. So, you have a base bid, a base bid one or base bid two. So, one would include the removal of the stairs, one would not. That may bump up somewhat the cost of what we're doing here. I don't think it would certainly double it, but it's, it's reengineering what that would look like. But we can certainly do that and bid it, and that's making an informed decision. At least then, you would be able to weigh that out. Is it worth the dollar spent to achieve what we're doing? And if that's the consensus of the board, then that's, that's what we need to hear. That's the direction.
Can you talk about the south double vestibule?
Right there.
So, will that be an access point during the day, or will that not be an access point during the day?
I think what we're envisioning is, once school starts again, these doors would be locked, as would these doors, and you would have a buzzer system to get in. And what we've talked about, and, you know, we're the polite community. And what happens is, is people, right now, you have a single set of doors, or you have a single row of doors here. As people come up, if it's a passing period, it's not uncommon for a student or a staff member at times to push the door open if they see somebody waiting outside to come in. The reason you have the double vestibules is that's much more difficult to do.
And I'm, my question isn't, "Why do we have a double vestibule?" I guess my question is, if you're going to allow access, buzzer or not, it partially defeats the purpose of the north double. So, if I understood you correctly, the north, the main, the north entrance, you come in and you must go through the office. It forces them through the office, which is, I think, a significant part of the security plan. By allowing access from the south, you sort of defeat that part of the security plan?
A little bit, but we're retrofitting a building that was designed in a different time, and is about the most succinct answer I can give. Adding a double vestibule adds a certain level of security. Is it perfect? Would we redesign the building? If we were building from scratch today, would we do it this way? Probably not.
I'm not really suggesting redesigning the building. I'm just wondering, depending on how far we want to go with security, we could simply lock those doors and not allow access through those doors, and then people would literally have to go through the office.
Except that 90% of your parking is behind the building, so in the winter, people would have to walk all the way around, literally all the way around the building to access the building.
Number of parking spaces out front, yeah.
Right, there's very limited parking out front.
So, and I, it was in a prior conversation with, it might have been you or it might have been Mr. Lumke, we had talked about, "What if we added more parking stalls up here?" This ends up being a less expensive option. But if, if that's locked and you're buzzed in, you know when people are coming in.
I was going to say that too, is that if, if you have to get buzzed in now, and nobody can let you in, the office at least knows that they've buzzed someone in. So, if someone buzzes by them, they know that someone's buzzed by them, instead of a kid let them in, and they don't even have any awareness that someone came in.
My other question was, I know last month we talked about the finance committee looking at earlier versions. Does the, has the finance committee looked at it? Do they have a sort of statement on?
In terms of the plans, we've seen 75% of that. So, I think the last time finance met, we didn't see the south vestibule, and we didn't see the, what's the thing I asked you about?
The multi-sensory.
The multi-sensory room. But we've seen everything else. Kent and Tom can talk about their memory. My memory, as well as the community memory, community members' memory, is that it wasn't going to cost $89,000. It was going to cost closer to 30 to 50. But, given those parameters, the community members were certainly behind it. So, I would just quickly ask, Alan, why isn't this $89,000 something we bid out?
Because, because it's a professional service, and it's an architectural service. So, you have an architect of record, which is Perkins Will, and it's almost akin to legal services. We don't bid those out. We, we use them as needed.
How do we decide who our architects are?
That decision, Perkins Will has been the architect for the district prior to my coming to the district, so I don't know when that selection process was done. I don't know if Ann would know if they were the architects for Project 2000.
Yeah, let me chime in on that. It's really an interesting question, and one that comes up fairly frequently. Yeah, make sure this, just got him, got him over there. Now, okay, so it's, it's a good question. It's one that comes up pretty often. It's not dissimilar to having an attorney that has bargained eight contracts for you. One of the things that has struck me since, since I got here is the, we have meetings, and the architect has a significantly greater historical memory of what was done, when, and by whom, and why, and where, all across the district. So, when we're in a meeting with him, it's like, "Oh, yeah, I remember when we did this part of the building, and we ran into one problem here and another problem there." That's part of what you're paying for, is that institutional memory. And there's also a continuity from that of, "Well, we used these materials last time. This is how long they lasted," and so on. There are a number of those different, sort of less tangible benefits that you would get if, that you don't necessarily count necessarily as, as you're doing them. But if you bid that, you'd have quite literally a different person you're trying to bring up to speed each time. And it's, think of having Mike Hernandez negotiate with us, you know, five different contracts in a row. There's a benefit to that.
Alan, one more real quick question. With that south vestibule, when I get buzzed into Cherokee or seeing any of the kids' schools, is there a camera? Is there any kind of visual aid that the people have at the front desk?
I don't, Tom, is there an existing one now?
There is, it's in a vest.
So, so, yes, there would be under this plan. So, the line of sight, if it needs to be upgraded, it would be.
Great, thanks.
I'd like to touch, though, if I could, in my memo, the cover memo to the board, I'd like to read a section from that and then elaborate. On January 19th, a conceptual plan and a five-year financial projection were reviewed with the Finance and Operations Committee. At that time, we did not have the architect's cost estimate. The FY '18 Consumer Price Index was not known, and we were just beginning to build FY '17 staffing. Since that meeting, we've received the architect's estimate. The CPI was announced, and we have greater clarity on next year's staffing numbers. These factors had both negative and positive impacts on the projection. So, Mr. Borkowski, you asked if the finance committee had looked at this. They had, but this time of year, data changes and gets updated. So, I don't, I don't want to give the impression that they had the current one. They did not. They had the most current information that we had on January 19th. Since that time, some things have gone up, some things have gone down. We'll get even a little more clarity between now and April when we make a final recommendation to you. And we would not bring a recommendation to you without being able to show you the financial impact going forward.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Now, move to board committees. Board Education Committee, Beth.
The Education Committee has not met since our last meeting. However, we do have a meeting this upcoming, not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow at 8:15 here at West Campus, March 1st.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Beth? Board Finance and Operations Committee, Rob?
We have not met since the meeting that Alan just talked about. We think we're meeting next at 8:00 AM on March 15th at West Campus.
Questions for Rob? Policy Committee, Jeff?
The Policy Committee met this past Thursday, February 18th, here at the West Campus in a joint session with the District 115 Policy Committee. In attendance were myself, Mrs. Sands from our committee, Ted Mormon, Diana Kryling, and David Lane from District 115, as well as Mr. Simic, Dr. Wilcox, and Mrs. Fowler from the administration. The purpose of this meeting was threefold. First, to review the approved or final draft of the amended policy 7.270, dealing with the administrate, administering of medicines to students. We also discussed recommended changes to policy 2.150, dealing with committees. And we discussed suggested changes to policy 5.210, dealing with the resignation of professional personnel. This applied really to District 115 only, as District 67's policy was not recommended to be changed. Regarding policy 7.270, administering medicines to students, the committee agreed with the revised version of the policy that we'll be discussing tonight on a first reading, so I won't bother going into any detail on that at this time. We'll talk about it during the action items. Regarding discussion on policy 2.150, dealing with committees, District 115 had suggested changing this policy that would add the board president as an ex officio member of all board committees. This would allow the board president to provide active input during committee meetings without his or her presence being counted towards a quorum. The board's legal counsel has confirmed that this arrangement does meet the legal requirements of the Open Meetings Act. While District 115 recommended that this policy be amended to reflect this suggestion and send the new policy to legal counsel for approval, District 67, with input from Mr. Borkowski, decided not to adopt the suggested changes. Currently, the District 67 policy provides for three board members to be on each standing board committee. The charter for each committee further invites all board members, including the board president, to attend all meetings, but as a member of the public. The committee, along with Mr. Borkowski, felt that this was sufficient to allow board president participation in all committee meetings. So, as a result, we chose not to adopt the suggestion, and there's no change to that existing policy. And lastly, as I said, regarding professional, the policy 5.210, dealing with the resignation of professional personnel, the discussion was around District 115 adopting the District 67 policy, and an agreement that where it makes sense, we should try to make sure both districts' policies are aligned in a shared service environment. And the meeting adjourned at 8:00 AM, nice and fast.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions or comments for the Policy Committee? Seeing none, we move on to the Compensation Committee, Tom?
Compensation Committee has not met since January, and at this time, we do not have another meeting planned, hopefully in March or early April.
Thank you, Tom. The JSSC Joint Shared Services Committee also has not met since our last meeting. Move on to Liaison Reports. NSSED, Suzanne?
So, NSSED Leadership Council met on February 17th at 7:00 PM. Susan Hans, who is NSSED's School, Family, and Community Partnership Coordinator and Parent Mentor, which is a very long title, but, and apparently, she is the only parent mentor left in the state. It was a program that was started at one time, and she's the last man standing, she said, gave a great presentation about how critical it is for NSSED and everyone, working with students with special needs in particular, to engage parents in meaningful partnerships, and to engage the community in meaningful partnerships, in an effort to provide the best possible outcomes for these students. There is a video link to this presentation-
School Family and Community Partnership Coordinator and Parent Mentor, which is a very long title, but, and apparently she is the only parent mentor left in the state. It was a program that was started at one time, and she's the last man standing, she said, gave a great presentation about how critical it is for NSSED and everyone, working with students with special needs in particular, to engage parents in meaningful partnerships, and to engage the community in meaningful partnerships, in an effort to provide the best possible outcomes for these students. There is a video link to this presentation that I will, that I've shared with the Board, and can share, can update my report so that people can see it. It was just a very powerful presentation about the importance of those partnerships, and particularly for our special needs families. Then they gave an update. They have a transition program that needs a new space. They have outgrown their current lease, and we are going to be able to, NSSED is going to be able to end that lease early with no financial consequences whatsoever. It's a mutually agreed upon thing between the landlord and NSSED, and they have found a new space. The Board authorized the Board President to sign a lease for the space once certain parameters were met. One was, we needed to have the permit to use the space for this use already in place, and the only terms that could be renegotiated were based on a building inspection with no additional cost to NSSED, and the cost for the initial construction that would need to be done could not exceed those that were presented at our meeting. And that was approved by the Board that night. If anyone wants to see the lease, I can show it to you. NSSED Articles of Agreement Changes, this is an important thing that I passed along information to all of the Board earlier. Right now, the Policy Committee at NSSED is continuing to fine tune some proposed changes to the Articles of Agreement with regard to district withdrawals. And the current ideas being proposed were shared for input only, and those have been passed on to our Board Members, and they are continued, they will continue to bring them before the Board as the process continues. So the final language has not yet been established. But basically, the big change is that they are adding a six-month period before you would provide a letter with your intent to withdraw, where you, as a district, really need to examine and engage a third party to examine what your capacity to serve your students actually is. So more on that to come. Also, NSSED is hosting their first-ever 5K Run Walk on Saturday, May 21st. More available, more information is available on the website for anyone interested in participating. And the next NSSED meeting is March 16th at 7:00.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions or comments for NSSED or Suzanne? Seeing none, we move on to Legislative Liaison. Beth?
I thought it might be helpful to provide a quick update on the Governor's Budget Address. Last Wednesday, February 17th, Governor Rauner gave his budget address to the state legislature, acknowledging that we are in our eighth month without a state budget. He urged all parties to work together in a spirit of cooperation. Specifically, the Governor spent much of his address discussing education, saying we must make the education of our children our top priority. The one thing I won't back down on, the one thing that's non-negotiable for me is increasing education funding. He went out to outline his two biggest priorities for education. First is early childhood education, saying the greatest investment we can make as a community is in our children, and the earlier we begin, the bigger the return. That's why our budget for early childhood education increased, increases state support by $75 million, a nearly 25% increase. He introduced a new person on his team, the Executive Director at the Governor's Office of Early Childhood Education, and highlighted that the $393 million earmarked for early childhood education is the most in state history. His second priority, not surprisingly, is reforming the school funding formula. He first outlined that the budget proposed fully funds the general state aid foundation level for the first time in seven years, making the most state money invested in the school funding formula. The Governor explained, "We must fully fund this foundation level as a first step towards reforming our school funding formula. Our current formula doesn't meet the needs of our children. Past attempts to fix the formula didn't work because they pitted communities against each other." This is something we've obviously discussed as a Board over the last several years, and you may recall that a representative from EdRed initially came and spoke to us on this issue about a year and a half ago. However, the Governor is very serious about making changes to the formula, and urged the Legislature to do so in a holistic bipartisan manner, saying, "Any school funding reform proposal that involves taking money from one school district and giving it to another is doomed to fail. To achieve formula changes, we must increase state support for education so that no community has state funding taken away as part of reform. I pledge to work with you on this issue to find a bipartisan way forward." The Governor then went on to introduce some of his guests at the address who put a face on what is at stake in education. How quickly the state will move on these mandates is still obviously TBD. We'll obviously want to stay close to the developments, and to that end, the next EdRed meeting is Friday, March 4th at 1:30 PM, and I'll forward the agenda to the Board when I receive it. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Comments or questions for Beth? Spirit of 67 Foundation, Suzanne?
Spirit of 67 Foundation met on February 9th. I was actually unable to attend because I had a child at home who fortunately got the flu and strep at the same time. So this report is based on minutes and speaking to people who were there. Mr. Simic spoke with the Board about a variety of topics, really a variety of topics, including the Safe Stop app, ACT and SAT changes that are coming, the fact that all four world languages will be maintained for the coming school year based on student demand, college anxiety, the college selection process for high school students, and security changes that are being implemented in the months ahead. And I did get feedback, actually, from a number of people who were at the meeting, who really appreciated your, the comments that you made and the things that you shared with them and your time. Our new, the new website for the Spirit Foundation is up and running and online. The Grants Committee is currently reviewing the grants that have been submitted. Grants will be voted on at the April meeting, and formally announced on Grant Day, which is April 15th, 2016. The Nominating Committee is currently working on filling positions for the Spirit's Board of Directors for the 2016-17 school year, and people can find out more about that on the Get Involved page of the new Spirit website, and there's a volunteer form that interested volunteers can fill out. The Home Tour Committee is gearing up for the 14th Annual Opening Doors for Education Home Tour, which will be on May 12th, slightly later than it has been in previous years. Program book shout-outs and Spirit sponsorships are available for purchase online, or those interested can use the form available on the website and mail it in. The deadline for submissions is March 4th. Those interested in volunteering can contact the appropriate staffing captains. Also, all of that information is on the website. So that is it. The next Board meeting will be March 8th in this room at 9:00 AM.
Thank you. Questions for Suzanne on the Spirit? APT, Jeff?
The District 67 APT Exec Board met on Wednesday, February 10th, here in the Board Room. Highlights of the meeting included, Mr. Simic opened the meeting and commented on the unusually low number of kindergarten registrations across all elementary buildings, specifically relative to where we've been in years past, so something to look at or think about going forward. Dr. Holland, Principal at Lake Forest High School, was our guest speaker and provided an overview of the District 115 Mission and Strategic Plan. She then presented some tangible examples of what the high school is doing to bring both the mission and the strategic plan to life within the building with students. Mrs. Whipple informed the Board about the new Raptor Security System that will be coming in March across all of the District 67 buildings. Mary Kay Hanlon, who is Chairman, Chairperson of our Nominating Committee, presented the new slate of APT Exec Board candidates for the 2016 through 2018 school years. They are, Uman Singh is nominated to be the APT Exec Board Vice President, Maureen Fitzgerald is nominated to be the APT Exec Board Recording Secretary, Julie, you're going to have to help me with this, Megan. Sakaji? Sakaji. I apologize, Julie. She's a neighbor. I shouldn't know her name. Julie Sakaji has been nominated to be the Cherokee APT President, and Emily Savage has been nominated to be the Sheridan APT President. This slate will be officially presented and vote upon at the annual district-wide APT meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, March 9th at Croya. All APT members and community members are invited to attend. In terms of what's going on in the different buildings, DPM held its family game night on January 22nd, and had 230 participants, which is an 80% increase over last year. This event also raised enough money via donations and raffle tickets to sponsor two Honor Flights for veterans to Washington DC, and there was even enough money left over to donate $435 to Lake Forest Hospital. So, a very successful event for DPM. Also at DPM, the Principals will be leading a book discussion on the Gift of Failure. That will be held on Monday, March 7th at 12:00 noon in the Cube, and all are invited. At Cherokee School, they held their annual Winter Fest celebration on February, on Friday, January 29th. Sheridan held its annual winter carnival this past Friday, February 19th. At Everett School, the second grade classes recently completed a unit on Lake Forest, where they learned about all the wonderful amenities of our city, and then were asked to create videos presenting what they had learned, as if they were realtors trying to sell Lake Forest to potential buyers. As part of this unit, I had the privilege of speaking with the kids to give them an understanding of the real estate profession, and what buyers are looking for when they buy a house in a particular town. Most notably, upon completion of this unit, I had the honor of presenting all the second graders with a Realtor in Training Certificate, to thank them for all their work and recognize them on a job well done. And needless to say, they were very excited to receive that recognition. Also, Everett held its Winter Fest Beach Bash, Beach Bash, this past February 5th, and it was attended by 214 students. Lastly, the Fine Arts Program, called Where the Sidewalk Ends, was presented at all the elementary buildings on February 4th and 5th, and the kids at DPM West attended a program called 1776 on February 9th. Both programs were very well received. And the next APT Exec Board meeting is the annual district-wide meeting, as I said, which is being held on Wednesday, March 9th at Croya.
Questions for Jeff? We move on to other. Are there any other Liaison Reports that we may have missed, or anything?
Right. Now we move on to action items. The first action item is the approval of the amended ECR contract, in the amount of $35,000 for fiscal year 16, and $38,524 for fiscal year 17. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or discussion regarding that?
I want to just confirm, this is in alignment with what was passed by the District 115 Board at its February meeting, correct?
That's correct. And 67 benefited from the attorney review at no cost.
Yes, and I think what the attorneys came back with is great relative to some of the concerns that were shared at the last meeting. They did a nice job of clearly articulating what will be shared and how it will be handled.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Alan?
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Novotny? Mrs. Clemmensen?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the approval of policy 7270, first reading. Is there a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
I'll actually hit the microphone. It's not a big revision, but for the self-administered medication, for the Effepens, if you refer to Paragraph 2, there is a requirement that you complete and submit a form, at least notifying the schools. If you drop down to the second item regarding the diabetes, there's a plan that has to be completed, a diabetes plan, but there's no reference in Paragraph 2 that it has to be submitted to the school. So, you know, I think for the benefit for the school, that there should be some required notification to the school.
I believe the Diabetes Care Plan is a school, is a document developed for the school.
Are we allowed to add words? Could we add words right now, if we wanted them?
The Policy Committee would have to agree to it.
Not necessarily. No. We're here to recommend. We're not here to approve. The Policy Committee merely recommends, if the Board as a whole during the conversation wants to create further amendments, there's no reason we couldn't.
Okay.
Kent, do you have a perspective of how that would need to be reworded, to show that it's something that is submitted and signed, or submitted to the school? It's my understanding the Diabetes Care Plan is something that's just, in the plan itself, it has to be submitted. If we feel that there's a need to make that more formal, I don't have a problem.
I think it's a plan that's written with the school. I don't think it's a plan that they write on their own, to just have for themselves.
Well, that's the question. Is the Diabetes Care Plan a plan that's developed with a student, with their physician, or is it something that's developed in a conversation with the school nurse and the school district, and the parents and the student? Because if it's that, then it's kind of assumed, or...
So, I think the other place where this is articulated, Kent, and we discussed it at the meeting that we had, is there's now a cross-reference to the nurses', isn't there a cross-reference now, Jeff, to the Nurses Handbook, or the Procedure Manual that goes with that, that includes all of this?
Under Number 3.
Right.
The school nurse policy procedure manual is...
The IPR 504 team must include a school nurse, and must follow the district guidelines contained in the school nurse policy and procedure manual.
Do we have any of our administrative friends here tonight that might be expert on this?
So, Kent, I just want to be sure, what your concern is, and it's a valid concern, is clear understanding of what is a Diabetes Care Plan, and is that something that is in the procedures manual, as something that needs to be done, or should it be articulated in this policy? Well, I would suggest that in Paragraph 1, it doesn't say it has to be submitted. Just because it says "School Medication Authorization Form," it's assumed it's submitted. It doesn't actually say in the paragraph that you have to fill this out...
It says "completed and signed."
So, it just said, but by the title of the document, you're assuming, since it has the word "school" in it, that it's going to be given back to the school. Because the Diabetes Care Plan does not have the word "school" in it, that's really what it boils down to. Because you have to, from my mind, that's really what it boils down to.
Right. It's my understanding that a Diabetes Care Plan would be a plan that you make with the school. That's the point of a Diabetes Care Plan. You wouldn't make one with your doctor to keep at your house for how you're going to do it. I think that that's, it's like, the 504 requires, in addition to the 504 being filled out, that the School Medication Authorization Form. I'm curious as to why the School Medication Authorization Form isn't in Paragraph 2, to be honest, because it's in Paragraph 1 and it's in Paragraph 3. If you notice, the last sentence in each of those paragraphs is the School Medication Authorization Form. But maybe that's a piece of the Diabetes Care Plan, so they didn't feel that it needed to be there. It's certainly something we can check on. This is a first reading, so we can just check to make sure what that is, and we can clarify it at the next reading.
Do we just want to add a sentence to the second paragraph that says the same thing?
That was going to be my question, if you just, after a school, after a Diabetes Care Plan, say something to the effect of, "and provided to the school," or something like that.
I think we need to know what the definition of a Diabetes Care Plan is. I think is the more, before we're adding extra things, I think we need to know what that is. That's what the question is.
Could you just say, "if provided for in the student-submitted Diabetes Care Plan?"
You know, at this stage of the game, my preference would be to take it back and let Ingrid take a look at it. All of this has been passed through both Ingrid and Legals, so if we're just adding a word or two to clarify what a Diabetes Care Plan is, it shouldn't take along, and we'll present at the next meeting.
So we'll table it for this month and bring it back next month?
Let's do it again. Now, so this, anyway, this goes to my question from earlier, which is, can you table something that's going to be changed? Because if we know it's coming back with different wording, theoretically, we're not rereading this again. We have to vote this down and then resubmit it for a first reading, correct? Or can we just let this die on the vine? Just let it die on the vine and come back with a new amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we are going to table policy 7270, the first reading of that, and we look forward to seeing that policy in a future month.
I'm sure, I'm sure Ingrid does too.
My only question as we table it is, is there any student this is, is there any time sensitivity?
I think we need to find that out this time. I mean, I think we need to find that out this time, and see if we need to be discussing waiving a first reading at the next time that we bring it forward. waiving a first reading at the next time that we bring it forward. If we have a student who's waiting on us to pass this policy, to be able to exercise their right to do these things...
The original amendment to the policy really dealt more with Number 3 on the exceptions that occur as a result of a 504 or an IEP plan that aren't covered under diabetes or EPPENS, so I don't believe this would in any way...
Right, but it was my understanding that we actually may have had a student who we were, where they came up against a wall, so I think we need to clarify that.
Fair enough.
Okay, so could we have a roll call vote on the tabling of this policy, please?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Do we need a motion to table it, though?
So moved.
Could we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote on the tabling, please?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move to the approval of the authorization to develop DPM East construction drawings, as we previously discussed. Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, questions, comments on this? Ellen?
When I was giving the report, Mr. Fulker asked about the cost of not having the stairs in there, so that is not in the architect's proposal. If that's the consensus of the board, we would need to know that, but then I think we're gonna have to change this because we don't have a proposal, so my recommendation would be, if you're interested in having that broken out, is to increase the $89,000 number to a number not to exceed, and then you'd be relying on us to do due diligence to make sure that's an appropriate cost. Otherwise, if you pass it as presented, then it's for the drawing that's on there.
Okay, I need to ask a clarifying question now about the stair situation. So, the stairs were one of the potential things that made the doing of the construction drawings for this more complex, because the price of the construction drawings isn't the price of the stairs, it's the price of getting the construction drawings completed, correct? So, the change in price, so to speak, was a matter of you not having the understanding that whatever we were presenting here was more complex than what was going on at the high school, and so the cost for the construction drawings was gonna be more expensive. If we now are saying we want them to develop two sets of construction plans, or construction plans with other alternatives in them, we're now upping the cost of the construction plan process to get alternative plans when we have a plan here that the people who work here are happy with this plan. Correct?
Right, but I think it goes to the consensus of the board about, to what level of knowledge do you need to make an informed decision? So, I think we would recommend, we like, that staircase is not utilized, taking that out really improves line of sight and opens up that office a bit, but we can certainly get another price, but there's a domino effect, because if we don't take the stairs out, that probably means reconfiguring that office area, which changes the engineering of the drawings, and so we can certainly do that, but I don't have a proposal number, so it would have to be a not to exceed, and we'd have to pick a number that we think would cover that cost, and then again, you would have to rely on us then to do our due diligence to make sure it's a fair number. So that's, I think, where the board needs to give some direction now, before you vote.
It seems, though, what Jeff's really asking for is to understand the order of magnitude that the cost of the stairs are. I'm not sure you were asking for a fully fleshed-out plan of what it would look like, but more, is it 50,000, is it 500,000, you know, some type of order of magnitude, because if it's closer to that 500,000, we might say, hmm, maybe we can live with the stairs. I mean, we, I think everyone agrees it would be nice to take them out, but we just don't have a feel for the order of magnitude from a construction standpoint.
And on order of magnitude, we could get that probably with a phone call and within 24 or 48 hours, but if the direction then is, we're not gonna have time or a meeting then to give us that direction to develop those plans, if that makes sense, if we want to do it this summer.
Ellen, you shared with me, I don't know what you would call them, but something like preliminary estimates for the whole project. Remember that? My understanding was in that preliminary estimate, the whole vestibule part is about $250,000. The major part of this is the other stuff. Is that not, do you remember that?
I remember sharing it with you. I don't remember the particulars of, but, you know, we could go looking for that, but it's just hard on the fly here. But you're right, they did, they did do a breakdown. I don't remember if the stairs were broken out separate or not.
So, I'm just trying to think through how we proceed. If we were to vote on the construction drawings as is, and you got the order of magnitude question answered with the phone call, I don't know what a big number or a small number is, but if it's a big number, it may change the discussion or the direction. If it's a small number, it may not, I'm not sure. Is that what we like, or would we prefer to do a not to exceed, or would we prefer just to do the 89,000? What are board members' thoughts on that?
Well, we know that the quote for the drawings as stands is $89,000, so, you know, do we put a 10% cap on it from there, which gets you about, you know, 97? You know? I personally would like to see the plans done, so, you know, however, to do it in the best way possible, to give us the best alternative as possible, but I think if we keep pushing it back, that pushes everything through. Doesn't mean we have to rush through it tonight, but I'd rather discuss any concerns about adding, you know, 10,000 bucks to this current budget if that's gonna be a backbreaker for somebody.
If I could suggest something, I'm gonna try and build off of what Mrs. Clemmensen said. If you were to approve it as presented tonight, we could have that discussion, I could look for that, that cost estimate to see if it's broken out, but if not, have a discussion with the architect and get that order of magnitude. We could communicate that out. If the board felt that that was enough to maybe change the direction, then you might have to call a special meeting, because you can't wait a month, or, I mean, you can wait a month, but it's not gonna occur this summer then. So if you approved it as presented tonight, we get some estimate of that information, and then if there's a consensus on the board that that's big enough to talk about, and you're willing to have an extra meeting, then we could do that and you could set that direction. When we did the high school renovations in 2006, we had a lot of special meetings because things come along incrementally, and that might be a smart way of approaching it, so if you'd be comfortable with that, it's building on your idea.
I think at this stage of the game, doing the, I don't wanna call it the gold standard, but doing what everybody thinks is the right thing to do, so to speak, is the best way to go forward at this late stage. I just feel that with a project of this magnitude and at this cost, it's always helpful to have a variety of options and understanding what drives those costs, so that, you know, we can step back and say, before we start sending these away, let's understand, you know, this is definitely, if we had our, you know, if it was unlimited money, let's go this direction. So, and even if we want to get additional drawings done anyway, you can always go back and get additional drawings done, right? Especially if you learn that it is $400,000 as a result of removing the stairs, then it actually makes sense to go get some more drawings done, but, so I would, I would say I'm fine with approving kind of the best solution potentially, or the gold standard, but I would like to understand what it, you know, what are the drivers of those costs?
So are you comfortable with what I just outlined?
I am.
Okay.
I think it also would be helpful if you do have what Dr. Lemke suggested in terms of how the different costs break out, that would be helpful to share with the board. I know I would be interested in seeing that.
So that estimate shows the removal of that stair. What that's not showing is what are the architectural costs and the engineering costs involved in taking that out, but the demolition of the stair ranged from 20-something thousand to 35 or 6,000, so it's not that significant on the construction end. But again, I don't know what the architectural cost would be to draw up, draw up two different sets.
I mean, I think, Jeff, your concern was if the removal of the stairs is a huge undertaking in construction cost, wasn't that your concern?
Well, that's both the removal and the replacement with the appropriate engineering and electrical and all that stuff that comes with it, and reconfiguring of that vestibule entryway, yeah, that's it. I mean, it's just, it's a big number, and as a result of it being a big number, I think we need to just understand the various breakdowns of the components of that number. So can we...
Did you hear that? I mean, what this says is, even at the high end, the vestibule and the stair together are, like, to deal with all of that is like $60,000. And so the big money is in some of the other parts of the project, that's the least of our worries, so to speak.
The life learning side of the hallway is where the majority of the cost? So you're saying that's how much?
And, and like...
So is that breaking down the million-to-million?
I was gonna say, so you're saying $900,000 is in the life, wow, okay.
What does that sheet add up to?
Oh, the administrative office, the main 5-6 administrative office is then a six-digit number. It's just that, that portion of it, that part of it, just that part of the drawing is like $60,000.
So can I ask, or can I, I guess, toss out there for consideration that we vote on the construction drawings as presented? Ellen, you may or may not even need to get more information, I'm not certain, but maybe you do, but can you send to the board the breakdown? You said that the total price might be between a million and a million four. Can you send us a kind of breakdown for the different main components?
Yeah, you'll have it before you get home tonight. It's just a matter of grabbing it and distributing it.
Is that, is that an okay way to move forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Then, then I think we've made a motion in a second, so can we have a roll call vote, please, on the approval of the authorization to develop the DPM East construction drawings in the amount of $89,000?
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmensen?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move now to the approval of the Human Resources items as presented. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions on that? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmensen?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda. Any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of a board member. The current items on the Consent Agenda include the approval of disbursement payrolls and financial statements dated January 2016, minutes of regular meeting and workshop January 26, 2016, minutes of an executive session January 26, 2016, and disposal of audio recordings. Would any board member like any of these items removed? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, for the Consent Agenda as presented?
Did we have a motion? I'm sorry.
So moved.
Did I skip that? So, thank you, Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now could we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs., oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Clemmensen?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to FOIA requests. We have a FOIA request from Mrs. Nancy Thorne of Lake Bluff, and I believe we have a second FOIA request from Gabriella Lori Schella. Announcements, let's see here. Actually, we also have a FOIA request from Smart Procure. Don't want to forget about them. In the announcement category, we have Thursday, February 25th, conferences from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, parent-teacher conferences. Friday, February 26th, parent-teacher conferences during the day, no student attendance. And Tuesday, March 15th, is our next Board of Education meeting, 7:00 in the Haskins Center at Deer Path Middle School. May I now have a motion? We're gonna be returning to executive session. Eileen, do I need a motion to adjourn or just to adjourn to executive session?
Workshop.
We're going back, we're going back to workshop.
Workshop, okay.
So do we need a motion to move to workshop, or do we just move to workshop?
No, because we can go straight into workshop.
All right. We're gonna be moving to workshop if anyone would like to join us. Otherwise, thanks for being here.